Pledge of Allegiance.
Get the cell a few thousand bucks.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of this land. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting in order. Roca?
Wyatt?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Vaguely?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Baddis?
Here. Is there any reason to amend the agenda?
I guess I'd like to amend the agenda to, uh, delete number, item number six.
Yes, second.
Wyatt moves, seconded by Vaguely, to amend the agenda to delete action item number, number six.
Roca.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Baker?
Question? Uh, we have nobody for public comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Then, yes.
My minister, okay? On my sheet.
Vaguely?
Yes.
Bynum?
Yes?
Baddis?
Yes.
There's no public comments, correct? Reports and communications. I attended the Fourth of July celebration. I thought it was very well done, uh, well attended. Fireworks were awesome, um, and I gotta hand it to the girls up on the stairs there, especially Emily. She's did a good job setting everything up, so, that's all I've got. Check.
Uh, I've been at the mission for a little while, and, uh, I did go past the, going, uh, Fourth. I think that everyone had a very good time. The kids liked the, uh, foam over there again. That was a good idea again, and, uh, I had watched fireworks from house, so other than that, um, that's all I have.
Uh, I attended the Fourth of July festivities also. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe you, uh, skipped, uh, amendments of the last council meeting.
Sure did. I'll go back. We'll go ahead and finish this one.
I just attend, I went to the, July Fourth, very, very, very well then.
Nothing to report.
Cody? City attorney?
Nothing.
City clerk?
Nothing to report.
Yeah, let's go back. I skipped this part, I'm sorry. Is there any reason to amend the minutes of the June sixteenth city council meeting? So the minutes Dan has written.
Yes, Wyatt? Wyatt? For the minutes?
I have more.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Yes, I'm a yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Vaguely?
Yes.
Bynum?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Okay, can I, can I go back and swear?
Yes.
Okay.
Time we'd like to swear in our new police officer, Patrick Jolly.
Come on up. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Patrick Jolly.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And of the state of Illinois.
And of the state of Illinois.
And laws of the state of Illinois.
And laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the city of Muskuta.
And the ordinances of the city of Muskuta.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Officer of Police.
The duties of Officer of Police.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And hold myself to the highest.
And hold myself to the highest.
Ethical and honorable standards.
Ethical and hon- standards.
Of the position of Officer of Police.
Of the position of Officer of Police.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public's trust.
Or the public's trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
To the community and the department I serve.
To the community and the department I serve.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer Jolly comes from, uh, New Bay Police Department. He's been there for, he was there for nearly three years. He's also in the United States Army for three and a half years, where he served as KI officer, a couple of other positions. So welcome into the family. Where you can take it, you in the face.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'm sure.
At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to City Manager Cody Hawkins for council business.
First item up for council, actions on page four of your packet. The second reading for code change ordinance amendment in the City Code, Chapter thirty-six Taxation, adding Article ten Parking Tax. Any questions? Action is approval of amendment to Chapter thirty-six, adding Article ten Parking Tax. City Council Attorney and Staff of Department of Parking and Parking Lots, Parking Areas, and Garage, that charge fees within the limits. Council decided to place a ten percent tax on parking vehicles, if each moving vehicle parks on each lot or area or in a garage. With this expense will help cover any costs the city incurred for, uh, certified services. Have to answer any other questions?
Yeah, Councilman White, you got any questions?
Yes, I do. Um, first off, it says in here to alleviate the expenses that the city incurred for the parking facility. What kind of expenses do we actually?
We would have EMS calls out there, police assists, fire assists, uh, plus the streets that they drive along to get to the airport.
We have, that doesn't matter whether they have cars there, whether they don't have cars there. I mean, it's directly in, you know, that attributed to the parking of the vehicles. Do we have anything, or is it just in emergency situations?
Emergency situations, we have to call out there.
Okay. You're talking about at the airport? Okay. Um, another thing I'm asking is, uh, says in here about you're gonna have to go and fill out the forms that were, um, described by the City Manager or his designate. Um, are we gonna furnish those forms? We have, I mean, what's the forms, are they gonna have to submit to the city? This is whenever they're paying their fees. Checks.
What number you on, councilman?
Um, five one, yeah, five, five point one.
The filing of return.
Right.
I don't know if we have the form yet, um, so this will be what they had to file to show us, I guess, how many, how much revenue and parking they had during the period of months that we track it. With the tax return, we're gonna need to file.
Okay, and the other question I have is, it, it isn't stating airport in here, it's not stating, uh, it, it just states anywhere that goes and has more than four vehicles. Okay, now would that, would that also include out on Route four? They have vehicles parked out there, what about out on Fusser Road, if there's vehicles parked in designated areas there? Um, because they're charging based on your vehicle being parked in there.
Right.
Are we charging, are we talking about campers? I mean?
This is just short-term parking, it's not for extended parking, so overnight, yes. This does not apply to long-term storage facilities, only parking facilities. So, right now, it's only the airport, but if anything else were to come into the city, it would apply, does not apply to storage facilities.
Okay, 'cause I didn't see that in here. Okay?
I believe it's covered, I'd have to.
Well, it may, it may be, but I, I didn't see it in here, that's why I'm asking. And the other thing is, uh, whenever you're talking about short-term or whatever, um, I mean, how many days we talking about? We talking about three, four?
No, it's as long as they're parking in a building like that, it does not, does not, it's not intended to cover long-term storage. Like RVs and places like that, out on Fusser Road.
Okay, what?
It's only for, uh, public parking garage or parking lot, it is a paid fee.
Okay, so this would also include Lonnie's situation down there, where he goes and has a wreck car that comes in, and he charges so much to have it sitting out there, and they come in and take it two days later, they're gonna end up having to pay a fee.
No, that, that's like storage for inbound, that's not the same. Just paid parking.
Okay, 'cause I didn't understand that in here, and that's, yeah, that's why I had the question. So if the only thing we're talking about is long-term parking, or I'm sorry, would be like out at the airport or somewhere like that, okay? Um, why are we limiting it to four vehicles? I mean.
I guess this is.
They always have them in four vehicles out there.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's what threw me in on this, whenever we're talking four vehicles, because there's a lot of places that had more than four vehicles parked in there.
I assume just based on our research of where we came, that's from, that's probably what's in there, you can have any number we want, but, you know.
Would you be a little more specific in here, or else, if you can tell me where it is, somewhere in here, is it, uh? Those are the only questions that I have.
Question two point three defines the parking lot, parking area, parking garage.
Are you at three point three? Two point three?
Page five.
Okay. That's exactly the part that I was reading in here. That's why it states about four vehicles, and also it states in here, uh, let's see. Uh, it says, "The charge of fees or other considerations and conditions is ready for use, and a rent or compensation is paid to the owner, manager, or leachy, and a premises." It doesn't say anything in here about, uh, short-term parking or whatever, it's.
But we can certainly table this and add anything.
I would love to have that in there, because the stipulation comes up, that we're talking, you know, somewhere like for Lonnie, or somewhere like that, or, uh, the store's out on Fusser Road, or somewhere like that, uh, where they, they don't come in and say, you know, are we involved, or whatever.
I, I understand, yeah, but it'd be in the second reading, we would have to, I think, I'm gonna add that language to it.
Okay. That's the only other question that I have.
I have no questions on this.
Councilman Baker?
I'm, I'm getting, I, I covered it. Bynum?
No question.
I sit, make a motion to table this?
You want to table, or you want to approve it based on the corrections?
And then, uh, we just want to amend it to exclude out long-term storage parking, and change the number of vehicles.
Okay, that, then I'll make a motion that the, uh, stories, et cetera, uh, be changed, that's in here to stipulate the parking requirements, and who is involved, and, uh, approve it from that. The correction, the corrections will be in there, okay?
I'm, it's probably from a procedural.
Table it, and then we just, that'll be fine. I'll make a motion that we table it until the next meeting, and, and so the corrections are in there, okay?
Do I get a second? Not much table. Second, second, Jack's bullshit?
I make a motion, we approve it as written.
Second on that one?
I'll second that one.
Bynum moves, seconded by Baker, to approve and adopt ordinance twenty-five eleven.
Okay, Roca?
Wyatt?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Vaguely?
Yes.
Bynum?
Yes.
Baddis?
Yes.
Next item on page nine, this is also a code change, this is the first reading. Ordinance is to amend the City Code, Chapter sixteen, the Health Code, Article five. Council approval of the amendment, Chapter sixteen, Article five, yard waste drop-off site. Based on some history that we've had, and some issues that have been brought up here recently, uh, we're asking the council to look at considering, in order to be in compliance with the IDNR statute, it was necessary to amend the rules and regulations of the yard waste drop-off site to not allow commercialists to file the gradable paper lawn bags or leak bags to be dropped off. Um, there has been some discussion about them being filed gradable, but, um, we have to use the, maybe not the proper thing being put in those bags. We still have to pick them up quite often, uh, they don't file the grade at the same rate as the national expectation. And without getting into too much history, we did have some issues with IDNR with this, uh, in the past. This is one thing they did not like us doing, uh, so I think we need to go back to complying with their, with their rules that allow us to stay open. We're asking the council to consider this.
This is the first reading. Anybody got any questions? Councilman White?
I don't have any questions, but I got a comment, uh, from what I understood, the, uh, requirements that they came in with, the bag to be washed downstream, et cetera, um, it wasn't so much our site, okay, as far as us using, you know, storing bags and stuff in there, or, not bio-gradable bags. What the, they were talking about is the bags being able to be washed downstream, and et cetera, and that's what's causing problems and everything. So that's why, I mean, I have no problem eliminating the bag used to be a back there, but.
Yeah, I think they had a couple reasons, like with that was one, and then again, from our perspective is, um, that they wanted no illegal dumping.
Right.
Getting some of that, because everybody thinks it shouldn't be in the bags, and then just. I agree.
Right. Councilman Baker?
I'm good with it.
As is. Councilman Vaguely?
I'm good.
Councilman Bynum? This is the first reading?
Next item on page fourteen of your packet. Also a code change, first reading, to amend in the City Code, Chapter thirty-six Taxation, by adding Article eleven Grocery Tax. But then council want amendment to Chapter thirty-six to add the grocery tax. The background, and, and we talked about this on a few occasions, did some memos and different things. State Illinois eliminating the one percent grocery tax as of January one, twenty twenty-six. Many municipalities in our area and throughout the state are opting to replace that law for revenue by implementing the one percent. Sale tax. This came to us as a, uh, ordinance, uh, IML, did talk to Al about it, which is definitely a couple of times outside of the meeting, but, looking this to the council to, so local one percent here in Muskuta, um, the state's doing away with it, that's impacting our revenue, that's the package collected for us. Asking the council to consider that. Have to answer any questions?
Councilman White, you have any questions?
Well, the question, I have, I already called Cody today, and I was talking to him about it, um, one thing is, is the, uh, the state is deleting the requirement for the grocery tax. Um, but in a second hand, the state cannot tell us how much grocery tax we're actually receiving. So, I cannot see making a judgment call on something I have no idea on what it is, and the state will not tell us what it is. Um, they have to know, I mean, if, if, if they go and get all the requirements and stuff that's in there, and they get all this tax money coming in, and they want to eliminate it, they need to know how much they're eliminating from their budgets. Um, and the other thing is, is that Betty Ann, who is one of the, only grocery store who we, which we have, um, very nice store, they're doing a lot of work and everything, and I think that it would be a big plus for them, since the state is actually doing away with the grocery tax, that we allow the citizens to keep that tax, and it would be a plus for the businesses and stuff in Muskuta, if we don't have the one percent tax on there. Um, that's some other stuff that was in here, oh, um, it says occupational tax, I'm over on, uh, page fifteen. What's the difference in a municipal grocery retailer's occupational tax and a, uh, where is it? A service tax? Municipal grocery service occupational tax? What, what's the difference in one and the other? I mean, are they trying to mix up with origins, or is it just, well, why are they referring to one thing and then changing, you know, referring to something else further down the line? Well, my question was, to Cody was, I, the way I read it was, I thought it was some kind of service, and it, uh, it was gonna be a service tax, that that is not what I was told, uh. Anyone have an answer for what the difference is in one and the other?
I have a question I wanna ask, uh, our attorney. Don't know your first name, I forgot.
Right, yeah.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the occupation tax, uh, basically is on everything that's retail, that is a sales tax, and like on normal goods that are sold in a hardware store, or whatever, the occupation tax is six and a quarter percent that the state collects, and then the municipalities, uh, add on whatever, like, uh, by-state adds on theirs, uh, the city gets their one, or two, two percent, and whoever else gets above that, that quarter. So that's what occupation tax is.
I understand.
It's what the state is getting. It is what the occup.
It's also in the statute, acting authority, allowing you guys to do that, have that kind of confidence in the statute, but you wouldn't have the ability.
So, the way I understand this, this whole thing, to make it simple, I think, is, is the state's doing away with part of the money that we're receiving today.
I understand that, but yeah.
So.
Ten one, please.
Yeah, and it's one percent that's going away.
Well, how much is one percent?
One percent is one percent.
Uh, one percent of what?
Of sales.
Are we talking ten thousand dollars, are we talking a hundred thousand, or are we talking whatever?
However many millions of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of groceries are sold. We've already been paying one percent on this, you know, it's just going away. So if you buy, you know, a hundred dollars' worth of groceries, you're not paying a hundred one dollars.
Right.
So you're paying a hundred one dollars now, let's say that's one percent tax. So that's going away, so the city doesn't get that anymore.
The city gets, doesn't get the one dollar.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the state.
Right.
Okay.
It doesn't matter whether it's, they buy ten dollars or ten million dollars, the one percent's one percent, that doesn't change, based on sales or anything.
Okay, what's the grocery one, our service occupation tax?
Well, I don't know the distinction between the two, but they're both the statutory, statutory authorities to allow you guys optional, optional stuff like levying tax itself. I don't actually know the distinction between the service and the occupation, we probably find that out.
Okay, is, is, this is in where the, uh, that is, Chapter thirty-six Taxation was gonna be adding to the article with, uh, nine for grocery tax, okay, um, like I say, based on what I can find out, and et cetera, uh, and no one can tell me how much it is, or anything else. And if someone spent a hundred dollars, and there's only a one dollar difference that we would actually get, I think we could go and absorb that, and I think that that would bring more business back into town, and we could recoup whatever we're gonna be losing on that one dollar. Um, I mean, that's the way I look at it. Uh, maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, I don't know, um, because the money goes back in, it goes back into the, uh, general fund. Okay, so, if we can't go and absorb the one percent, then I think that we may be doing something wrong.
It, it is also an account decision, um, we're not a huge sales tax base community anyway, but as I said, the sales taxes we do get, the majority of it is the tax. Because Betty Ann, Dollar Generals, and some, some gas station items, your, your items like soda, alcohol sales, candy, that have stuff that's excluded, and.
Right, that's in regular sacks.
No prepared foods, like coming out of restaurants, that's, that's only grocery items.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying that, you know, I would be in favor of not adding the one percent on there, to allow our grocery store and those type of items to recoup that kind of money. And as far as the citizens, let citizens do whatever they want to with that one percent. Um, that's my view, so.
Councilman Baker? With all that being said, uh, everybody's already used to paying that one percent right now. I'm opposed to taxes. I pay an enormous amount of taxes every year. Uh, but this is something, and you have to take your personal views out of this, and think what's better for the, the city and the community at large. Uh, if you take that there's ten million dollars in grocery sales in town, which there are, most likely divided between everybody, that's a hundred thousand dollars that we'd be losing, that you'd need another hundred thousand dollars on top of that to make up for what, what you're losing. So it kinda has a double effect once you lose that, so, um, uh, and, and second of all, uh, just to answer you, Jack, I'm all for business in town, I was in business.
I understand that.
I believe we need to promote business, I think that's the chamber's responsibility to do that, uh, uh, along with the city. But one percent's not going to make a difference between somebody coming to Muskuta, his shop, and not. And a good example is, if you go to Fairview Heights to buy whatever, you know, there are about nine percent sales tax, where you could buy the same thing here, you know, for eight percent. Or you can go over, you know, to buy groceries at, at Walmart, they're in a special service system. Everybody floods over there, or to Schnucks, or wherever else, and they're paying more than that, you know, on purchases. So, I don't believe that's enough to deter anybody from coming here. Uh, you were, you were in business, the people that shop here shop here, you're not gonna draw somebody from Belleville to come here to shop, from Fairview Heights to come here to shop, or you'll get passersby that'll shop occasionally, but typically, after being in business for over twenty years here, I can tell you the shopping patterns, and it just doesn't work that way. So, I'm all in favor of this.
Councilman Vaguely?
So we, so we don't know how much we actually get from this? Okay, and?
Sorry to say, explain, so we have tried, we have contacted the specialized unit that handles this, within the Illinois Department of Revenue, and Melissa has an email to show it to me today, 'cause I was, I was making sure I answered Jack's question correctly. They literally said it is impossible to separate it out, because it did not work it that way, grocery tax from other sources.
And would this apply to, like, deliveries from Wal- Walmart, Am- 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 Amazon from outside, that we, that come here, do we, does that apply to that for us, or?
Don't believe so, I believe it's from the point of origin, this is where it's federal taxes base, so it, it would, you know, if Betty Ann's delivering, but then the other shores coming from outside the city then.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all, that's all I had, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kinda on, on the fence, on the fence, defense side, so I know we've been paying on it, but, on the flip side, I think if we can give it an advantage to it, in, in, in town business, I think it's something to look hard, look hard at, so.
Councilman Bynum?
I'm gonna agree with Mike, um, I, I, that number's gotta be around ninety thousand dollars, that, that's tough to lose presently, uh, so I'd be in favor of us keeping that one percent grocery tax.
I mean, I agree, I think every, every municipality's sticking with it, 'cause it goes away January one, and they're, and O'Fallon's voting on it tonight, they're gonna vote in favor of it. Granted, theirs is probably a million, you know, but I agree with Councilman Bynum. Even fifty thousand to a hundred thousand.
Even fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, we gotta make that money up somewhere else then.
Right.
It's not easy to do, so. Okay, this is just the first reading though, so, talk about it later.
Next item up is on page eighteen of your packet. Uh, this is code change ordinance amended in the city code, twenty-four motor vehicle code. Requested action is council approval of amendment chapter twenty-four motor vehicle code, article eight, non-highway vehicle regulations. This has come up in discussions and moving into it, uh, as the council, at some previous meetings and at some conversations we've had to revise the city code to amend the age and hours for operation for non-highway vehicles. You can see on page twenty, the proposed list is to reduce the age. Currently it's at eighteen, as the driver must be for a non-highway vehicle, to change that to sixteen. Uh, since a sixteen-year-old is a licensed over a, a motor vehicle. And then section C on page twenty-one, operation hours, previously were six AM to ten PM. The proposal is to change that to twelve PM. A lot of that came from, most of our traffic is coincides with the park. Um, the park is open until eleven. Sometimes we have workers there that volunteer in the city that drive those types of vehicles. We didn't think that would, uh, changing hours would be that much different. I think it would help in those situations. And if there is any concern about younger drivers in those vehicles, we do, we do currently have, uh, sorry, AM, twelve AM, not PM, that is a typo. Um, we, we do have curfew hours. And that does apply to licensed sixteen-year-old drivers that have to be in by a certain time. Uh, happy to answer any questions. This is a proposal we're asking council to consider.
Yeah, again, this is a first reading, so. Councilman White, you got any questions?
I have no problems with it.
I have no problems with it. Councilman Baker?
Um, I did have a few people reach out about it. The, there was no, no concerns about the twelve, twelve, twelve o'clock. A lot of concerns was dropping from eighteen to eighteen down to sixteen. They didn't feel that it was, that, that they're, they're start, they're starting to learn at that time that it still should stay at eighteen. I personally think it should stay at, at eighteen. Has, was, has the police have, give their thoughts on, is there okay to go on to sixteen? Are they gonna keep it eighteen, or?
It's just, I don't know what's specifically to the department that run. Uh, Matt can deal with a lot of that. He might have some comments, but it was just based on what other codes we'd seen.
Okay, okay.
Certainly can do whatever council wants.
Councilman Biden for?
I'm, I'm opposed to the age change also, and I, I do have a question for Officer Steinkamp. What issues, if any, have we had with golf carts or other motorized vehicles, um, on, on the city? I, I'm definitely opposed to golf carts. I just don't think they go fast enough. There's gonna be a bad accident with one of those. Uh, the side-by-sides, okay, maybe. Uh, but I just think the golf cart is a bad idea. I don't care what other municipalities do. There's gonna be an accident here at some point. I don't care if they have a slow-moving vehicle sign or whatever. There, there's gonna be one, and, uh-
Well, mainly is they cannot be on the state highway. Like they can cross Route Four, they can cross Sixth Street, they can cross Sixth Street.
But, you know, you see them going up and down, carnet, you know, I mean, in, in, you know, in, in the other street. I mean, you know, it, it's legal for them to do that, that's fine, so there's nothing I can do about that. But what, what issues are we having, if any, and also are there any issues we're having with younger drivers? Are you having with issues with, say, drivers under twenty-one, more than over twenty-one?
It's our sixth year or seven, I'm sure with that, it's, cause I've been doing inspections for several years. And knock on wood, we haven't had any issue other than the one, which has been a few years ago, that the city had to deal with Mr. Pope. That all got resolved, the special needs.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking more about accidents. We haven't had any, we haven't had any.
Knock on wood, we were very fortunate.
Okay.
Every inspection I go to, everybody's very clear. They understand all the ordinances and they know which streets they can and can't cross. But it's, I'm, if you're asking my opinion, I think it should stay at eighteen too. And you got a lot of inexperienced drivers that are just learning how to drive a vehicle. Now, if we're gonna put them behind a golf court or a side-by-side, I kinda agree with Councilman Biden, so, that's my opinion.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have had, have never had any accidents on many, have many traffic stops either, cause everybody fights about the city ordinance as far as the side-by-side and the golf carts go. Very good.
Okay, I mean, I agree with you guys. I think it should stay at eighteen. You know, these young kids, we got some right now that's doing it. They're, they're gonna get caught, you know? Um, but as far as I see, when these sixteen-year-old kids are driving them, they're following the rules. You know, there's a couple in town here that's got lawn mowing businesses. They're pulling their lawn mower trailer with it and stuff like that, but, I mean, I, I really believe it should be at eighteen, cause that's what we said at the beginning, for safety reasons.
I just got a comment. Um, whenever this was originally brought up and originally passed and everything else, um, the age eighteen came into fact whenever the school district brought up that the school district was against people or schoolchildren, whatever. Okay, driving these, these type vehicles to school. So that is why it came up to be eighteen, because there's very few, unless you get into seniors, you know, it's gonna be eighteen years of age that would be driving these schools. And that's what-
That might be in our student handbook as well.
Right, that's what drove the original eighteen years. Okay, because originally we were talking as long as they were a licensed driver. Okay, and then the school district is what actually contacted us to go and say, well, they would rather that it would be eighteen. So if that has a factor in there or whatever, okay. I have no problems with the eighteen. Um, I don't have any problem with the sixteen, as long as, uh, you know, they're a licensed driver, et cetera.
Which could be all gonna be a problem for the school district too, if it's like we-
Well, it shouldn't be, but, well, what the school district problem was, is one is for parking. And the other thing is, is just like, uh, Councilman Biden for what it said, they don't move fast enough going in and out. So, there will be an accident as far as trying to get into the parking lot, trying to get out. Whenever someone has a car trying to get in, okay. And like I said, that would be a problem there. But like I said, that's what stemmed the age eighteen to begin with, so.
One more, one more comment. Wait, Councilman Baker? Yeah, I really don't care either way on this, to tell you the truth. Uh, when we originally passed it, it was eighteen. The idea of the school was brought up at that time also. But the school has their own set of rules. They don't allow them. You know, so that's nothing that the city has to deal with whatsoever. Um, uh, plus I think they have to have a permit to park at school, don't they? You know, and they're not gonna get a permit to park a golf cart at school. You know, so that's, that's a non-issue on this. But when we originally passed it, uh, the, the main thing was concern and young kids just first getting their driver's license. But then I, on the other hand, you should look at it also and say, I got a driver's license. I passed the state test. I learned how to drive, you know? And then this first, what the first six months, a lot of kids have under vendors or whatever. You know, I certainly did, you know? Um, so, you know, I, either way, and really I would take the advice of, of our officers, you know, on this type of matter.
Again, this is a first reading, so.
Yes, uh, again, this proposal, we'll make those amendments and changes in the coming back for the council.
Twelve o'clock's good.
Next item up is on page twenty-five of your packet. This is also a first reading for a code change. This is the ordinance amending city code chapter eleven electric system. Requested action is council approval of amendment to chapter eleven electric system to add secondary service rate for electric vehicle charging stations. Some background on this, staff is requesting this code change provide a new classification of uses to reflect the rate structure for commercial customers, taking secondary voltage level to provide service to electric vehicle charging stations. First charging station within the city limits is almost complete and it's in the best interest of the city to update our code with fees for this service. This is at, the project is at the pilot station. It's a commercial, uh, electric charging station. They, they do, we've looked at other, I mean, municipalities, they have their own rate structure because of the varying demand load. Uh, it's quite a heavy load and it, and it fluctuates whenever a public car is plugged in or not. So, uh, we mirrored our, oh, this rate class for electric charging stations for vehicles after one of the member communities. We'll run it, kinda ask, see how it goes. Uh, if we need to make adjustments down the road, we will. But we looked at two different municipalities that have them. Um, kinda, they are set up a little bit differently. We kinda took the pieces of what we felt were best with our system. Kim came up with the calculation and that's what we'd like to put into our ordinances, get it in place before, we could at least have a, a fee for this service, of electric service for this type of use in place.
Again, this is just the first reading, so. Questions or comments, Councilman Biden?
Now, you, uh, whatever you're talking about, uh, the electric charging station, are you talking about the station? Or are you talking about each one of the units? Uh, cause we're going to charge a hundred and fifty dollars per, uh, month that's gonna be on it, like a hundred and forty, so. Okay, so is that for the whole station? Or is that just for each one of the items that they have that's in there?
Towards the charge.
Right.
Um, I believe that there's two, or if I'm remembering this design-
There's one on each side.
So it would be, I believe each one, because they're each drawing power from it.
So then that would be three hundred dollars per, uh?
I can double check before it comes back in the secondary, but I believe that is correct.
Okay.
Do we not have one meter for that, the whole charging station? And then, and then, then you get into the kilowatt hour charge? So out at, at pilot, for example, when they have the Tesla charging? So we're, we're, we're charging them for every charging station? Or we're charging them one, one fee for the meter we have, just like I have on my house or my business? Okay, one fee for that?
So it'd only be per meter, so if it's only one meter, then it'll-
Okay, very good. That, that was, that was the way I understood it.
Let's look at the design to see how it's set up. If it's one meter for the entire station or if it's a meter for each side?
Got it.
Yes, they charge for each side, if they're revenue pilot does.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
How that trans, I'll, I'll look at the electric plans to know for sure how to answer that.
Okay, I, I was just curious. I mean, I have no problem with, you know, with the way it's written or anything else that's in there. It's just the way that it was stated as far as per charging station, if that meant, just like Steve was saying, does that mean we have one meter that's gonna be out there? Okay, and if we have one for each one, well then we should be charging them a hundred and fifty for each one, because that's what drives the cost on it.
And I will look at that design to know.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sure that's the only question I had on.
Councilman Baker? One other question. So the, the base meter charge, there might be one or might, or there one, might be two. And then the per kilowatt charge, that's what it is, you know, a nickel, a kilowatt. Uh, are line charges on top of that? Fuel charge?
Should all be included too.
That would be on top of that, or is that included in a hundred and forty-nine dollars?
I'd have to see how Kim did the calculation.
Yeah, and, and then my, okay, my next, my next question, uh, because, you know, basically residential or commercial, we were about seven and a half cents, uh, seven cents a kilowatt and then about seven and a half on line charge. And about fourteen and a half cents a kilowatt hour. Um, so I guess my question was, why, why are these charging stations getting a break over normal business rates and residential rates? Like, that, that's a question I have. The other is the demand charge that goes from a nickel, uh, uh, a kilowatt. And I know the demand per kilowatt, so those aren't demand meters out there, are they?
Demand of how they pull off versus-
I know there's a demand meter.
And a regular meter that, that-
The calculation's different, so. Then if they go on a demand situation like all, in the summertime when all the air conditions are running and everybody has to pump more power out, so that would be the demand situation, so we're gonna charge them twenty-two dollars a kilowatt hour instead of a nickel? Yeah.
Man type of-
That's a huge amount of money.
Actually average, with assistance of the law.
Okay, if, if it works, it works, okay. My question's-
I, I, again, it seems like a lot, but if your car charges in an hour, or- or hard costs are-
Yeah, I have-
Thirty dollars if it's-
Yeah, if, if that, more than they're making on a three cents a gallon on gas, yeah. Councilman Baker?
No questions.
Councilman Biden for?
No question.
Again, that's the first read.
Next item, we're gonna skip down to page forty-six of your packet. Comes to you in the planning permission case twenty-five dash six. Proposing a square metal building at ninety-eight Second Street, with site plan and architectural review. Requested action is council consideration for those metal buildings to be used for, uh, storage purposes at ninety-eight, uh, Second Street. Get into some background on this. City code requires this to be made in site plan, which is required for any new development on the, the, the site plan. Requires review by the planning commission and approval of the city council. Planning commission has reviewed this and has recommended upon to review for the city council. Development of the site in the current packet will result in construction of a pre-classified metal building to serve the needs of the Little Indians Recreation League. Small, multifunctional building can be expected to primarily be used based to store the league's sports equipment. As their needs evolve, the building will transition and will be improved to serve as a place for organizations, meetings, or events. This will not serve as a practice facility or other activities that will routinely result in the need to use adjacent streets for on-street parking. This limitation will allow the building and the site to remain compatible with their surrounding areas, which is within the downtown commercial zoning district, but adjacent to a transitional area where there is RSA residential zoning, uh, located. Site plan shows the building location. Again, this is downtown commercial zoning. There is no requirement for off-street parking to serve the use. Site plan does show a loading area and a parking spot for one automobile, which is a handicap, that's a spot. Land use and zoning requirements, again, this part is with downtown commercial. Storage is not specifically called out by rights in the downtown, uh, commercial zoning district. Additionally, storage uses do not tier back unless there is a less than ten zoning district in the neighborhood commercial or office zoning districts. As it is an unlisted use, uh, there's a subsection in our staff that we believe this falls within as unlisted the use's compatibility and the proposed location is sufficiently similar or consistent with uses currently allowed in downtown zoning district, which include, uh, parking lots, garages, and local delivery services. There's no maximum building coverage provision in the downtown commercial district. Proposed building's gross floor area, which only one story is four thousand six hundred, sorry, four thousand six hundred forty-three square feet. Maximum building height in the zoning district is three stories or forty-five feet. Proposed building's height will be less than seventeen feet. And as depicted on the site plan, the building will meet all downtown commercial district building setback requirements. Discussion points, uh, first being the off-street parking. Again, off-street parking facilities are not required in this zoning district. Site plan does require one handicap spot to provide it, be provided on State Street. Off-street parking lot lighting, pretty standard in our code. Any off-street lighting or loading area between six PM and six AMs of, in a system of lighting, adequately standard of at least one handle per illumination of the area parking to be used. Site plan indicates three exterior lights will be attached to the building. These lights will be on a total center. These lights will be dusted to dawn the afternoon, the lights detailed, so these light fixtures will result in a measurement of less than one handle foot at the property lines adjacent to the parcels next to the residential zoning district. Site access and circulation, building front on State Street and Second Street with our whole city, uh, maintained roadways. Substance tract is all, so there is no site circulation, uh, within the site. Utilities all free, standard water, sewer, storm drainage, electric to be provided by the city, natural gas and by Ameren. Just a note on, on storm drainage, I know that's an issue that typically comes up and it did, that was an extended note here on the planning commission. This site was occupied by barn-type structure, uh, covered significant area of the property. The footprint of the proposed new building is equal to or less than the footprint of the barn that was there before. So our, our planning staff felt that there was no expectation to believe that there would be a net gain and water runoff from the building as compared to what was there before. Code also, in section thirty-four, three- Code also states in section thirty-four, three-nine, uh, requirements for trash receptacles. Site plan shows the location of the trash receptacles to be on the northeast corner of the building. Uh, receptacles are kept outdoors and will be screened from public view. This particular area is not within an airport overlay district, so we did not need any feedback from the airport or base on this one. On the architectural design review, architectural review of the zoning code provides design standards, article applies to all new construction in the downtown district. In addition to the overall building exterior colors, the site plan must address the appearance of the front facade and ensure the roof pitch meets the following standard, which it does. Section thirty-four, eleven, six also states on new commercial, or no new commercial institutions, those are remodel. Basically states that this, they cannot be made out of metal. Um, this is, uh, appearance has been granted many times over in the city by the planning commission to, and we've allowed it, uh, for, for, before, so the planning commission did move this one on. No need to grant the bareness, it's really just a code update that we need to make. Allow the, metal siding's come a long way from when we first banned metal siding, it's more decorative now, so it's just a code update that needs to happen. We'll just get, get up on that. The only thing, last thing, color of the exterior was not called out on their site plan, but according to code, building colors and trends must be earth tone, white, somewhere suitable colors. They're listed there. We'll be getting that and, and confirm that before building permitted issue. We have to answer any questions.
Councilman White, you got any questions?
I was also looking in here with the, uh, planning commission went and met and et cetera. Um, what I'm hoping is that we don't run into the same problem, we get a silver on Port Street. So we go and have a building that's over there that was used for practice, et cetera. This building, which they are saying could be used for meetings and et cetera, uh, item one is, uh, there is no bathrooms in this place. Is there gonna be any water or anything else? I mean, it's, and, and if they do use it for those, um, do we have a requirement that says that X number of people use the building is gonna have to have a restroom or anything that's gonna be in there?
Yeah, so, we, we did talk to, so this is kind of base plan for them? Their, their most immediate need is storage for their equipment?
Right, I understand that.
So probably only twice a year that there would be equipment picked up and dropped off. I believe they do have an arrangement with the neighboring business that can allow them to use their parking area when that happens, also to alleviate any condition on the street. Um, it, it would be roughed in for a bathroom, so when they do create an office space or a meeting space for their board, um, there would be, oh, if they had to come back in and give a remodeling permit at that time, uh, which they had to submit their plans for that, they'd be reviewed, so.
So we will ensure that it is stubbed in and it is hooked up to the store and et cetera?
Yes, so when there is a need for a bathroom, it will be...
Okay.
...by, uh, by, uh, issue of remodeling permit for that one, yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is, um, stated in here that, uh, they would not have to redo the sidewalks of that over there. Uh, I went past the sidewalk over there tonight on the south side of the, um, there is no sidewalk whatsoever. And one is on Second Street, that thing is all busted up and, um, since it is in a residential area and et cetera, I would like to at least go and see them go and put sidewalks in there.
And that, that did come up with the planning commission. Also, we talked with the developer, um, with the site local, if we done, um, it, it might be, uh, one of the city programs, maybe, maybe, whatever it is.
Oh, they stated that they would go and put it in if they could go and work something with the city for the half and half, fifty-fifty, which is a program that we have.
Right, so that's...
Okay, but what I was concerned with is it doesn't say anything in here about that we would require them to go and have it in there, whether we go fifty-fifty on it or not. Um, they could just go ahead and put the building in, don't do any of the sidewalk and say, well, it wasn't anything in there. Um, and the same way with the bathroom to be stubbed in there. I mean, I, I would like to see that those two items put in there, okay? Which, you know, should amount to nothing.
We can add those as conditions of approval, but that would certainly be done with the issue.
That's fine. Okay, that's the only two concerns that I had. Other than that, I think it's a good idea, I think it's a good use of the property back there, so.
Councilman Baker?
No question.
Councilman Bakerly?
No questions.
Councilman Bynne for?
No question.
So this one's up for council approval? I entertain the motion to approve?
I'll make a motion if we approve for the, uh, story building to be placed back there on Second Street, which and the conditions of approval to be added in there.
Can I get a second? I'll second that.
Wyatt moved second by Baker to approve the site plan and architectural elevations for a proposed single-story metal building at ninety-eight Second Street.
Local?
Wyatt?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bakerly?
Yes.
Bynne for?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. We're done, the council miscellaneous?
Um, I just had a question, I don't, could've asked you before, that's Cody, um, based on the information that we have from the, uh, updates that you went and gave us, can we ask questions on that here or would you rather we ask questions later? Okay, um, did we get any timeline on Oxford Homes or anything out there since they come in and requested their paperwork and stuff?
No, I was gonna be following up with them, um, with the holiday and there we have her background, but so they did come in and request their, the tax, that's just a big concern, their enterprise zone, so that subdivision is moving forward, um, we just haven't gotten a timeline on them exactly when they're gonna break ground, but I would expect to see this.
Well, they don't have building permits yet, do they? Did, did we give their building permits already?
I don't think so.
Because they would've run out by now if we gave building permits.
They usually did for a year. Now, I, I have building permits, but I'll have to check this out, infrastructure part, like site grading and stuff like that.
They've got them.
Okay, um, and at the last meeting, uh, this was under miscellaneous items, um, that was brought up about the, uh, all purpose and the inclusive playground back there, that the, uh, existing playground area is on the Chevy Park, the, uh, all that playground equipment is gonna be removed back there?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how long it's gonna be until it's removed? Are you gonna replace it? What are we gonna do about the, uh, interim time between whenever it's removed and to be, cause there isn't even any, uh, money or anything that I know of, it's for the all-inclusive, there's not even any plans or anything for it. Um, to be coming up going and say, we're gonna remove all that stuff right now?
So, they do have their design plan, that's what called out of when we brought this to council, because space-wise, they, they do need for both playgrounds to take up that entire space. So they do have their plan, you're right, they are currently working on their fundraising, they don't have all that yet. Our period is going pretty well. Uh, their hope is to break ground next summer.
Okay, do you have a copy of the plans? I mean, can I get, can I get a copy of the plans or something so that, um... Okay, cause I'd like to see, you know, what areas as far as are involved, because we don't have time and money and everything else that's in that fence back there, where the mini parks and stuff was, for the smaller kids and everything and, um, which was segregated out for the smaller kids versus larger kids. And if this is gonna be just an all-inclusive, is the whole thing just gonna be one big, I mean, that's what I would like to see, okay? Cause I have not seen anything yet.
Yeah. Yeah, so it, it is all one big playground that has the safety surface, all inclusive for able-bodied and disabled and lots of different things that...
If you, I'll stop up and see if I can get a copy of it, or at least see what you have. Okay, um, and on the pickleball courts, um, where are they talking about moving the pickleball courts and stuff, uh...
There, there was a, kind of a proposal that came through the park board to add a football court facility. Currently, they're kinda housed underneath, overhang of the ag building.
Right.
Set that out. If, they wanted a more permanent, more dedicated facility, so we did talk about that with the park board and it came to council last meeting. Again, there is no funding in place for this. I know there's gonna be some fundraising efforts by different civic groups in the community for it. Um, we could look at some grant opportunities. They would look at locating it on the north side of, of the park. There was kinda, signed us some discussion, possibly behind the, the dog park along North Penn, there's also been some discussion, maybe more in-between, uh, kinda behind the football field, closer to the bathroom, on, on the north, north side of the park, and we could use that, the gravel parking lot behind Penn, that, um, well, I would say they clearly zeroed in on a location other than on that side of the park. Um, I think as it progresses, we've still gotta get some design concepts of what it's gonna look like, what the cost is gonna be, had to find a grant to apply for, so kind of a proposal in, in progress and, and it will come back to the, to the council as that moves along.
Okay, because, when, might I say, what I was looking in here, just went to, was the, the north of where the, uh, park and everything was, which, there's a lot of plans and stuff that's going in over there that, you know, different people want different things to be put in and et cetera, and there also, there isn't any parking over there. So, I mean, I would agree that down nearby where the bathrooms and stuff all over there by where the dog park would be, um, down in that area, it could use, maybe we could even expand the parking lot down there.
Yeah, that, that was talked about, uh, and the reason, then on the, right behind the, the dog park, if you stayed close to, to the big ditch there, there was thought that you could utilize the existing parking lot and take the sidewalk around the ditch. The walkway's on the other side of the ditch. Basically, all you need is a sidewalk extension versus a parking lot, but yes, I agree, um, as more things start to develop on that north side, it might be a time to revisit, maybe updating the park plan on that side.
That's what I was also gonna bring up.
At some point, we are gonna have to probably cross that big ditch on North Penn Street.
I was also gonna bring that up, cause it was brought up before about putting a, um, bridge across there, similar to the one that we have up there by where the dog park is. You go and get that and put another one down there, because utilization on that end of the park and everything's gonna be, you know, expanding quick. We're talking about the, uh, putting Civic Center and everything down in there and all that, okay? I mean, and, and then I went and read this, what was in here, and it, I just couldn't understand what was going on or anything else, and I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah, it's more of a proposal at this point, just for us to proceed, keeping, uh, keeping to look into it. Um, but yeah, I, I would agree, there needs to be, other than just piecemeal in that north side, there needs to be a plan to stick to and...
Okay, and then the other part that was in here is about the T-ball fields. Um, the ones that they were gonna go and put down there, it's gonna be the north part of Trinity. Okay, now, is the Quarry League putting those in? Or is the city paying to put those in? Or do we have any kind of agreement or anything that's in here? Um...
We don't have a, like, a written agreement in place, again, that's kind of a proposal that's in the works, I'm talking with Quarry League. Their need is for T-ball or small fields, so we, we're trying to find a spot that would fit those, that was a good space for them, and that piece of ground we really don't, haven't found a good use for, that would work. I think they wanna start with just one field, they would be talking about doing it them, themselves, doing the dirt work.
Okay, what, what about lights or anything else? I mean, are we, we talking anything at all like that?
No lights. This would just be for small kids, like, little practice, small, small T-ball games.
Okay, so it would only be for T-ball? It would not be for Quarry League's use for practices or anything else?
Right, it would be for T-ball and potentially coach pitch for the smaller kids.
Okay, and they would be hitting towards, well, we can get to that later, okay? Uh, that's all I had.
Councilman Baker? Uh, couple, yeah, like, three things, so try and make it quick. One is, uh, at the park north of the ditch, okay? Uh, one of the groups proposed putting a...
Container.
Out there, which I was opposed to. And I took a drive back there and looked and saw that we have two containers back there that are rusty and look horrible. Uh, and that whole old building sitting back there, we wanna have a nice, beautiful park? It's pretty trashy there, you know, in my opinion. There's barrels. I understand that we need place for storage, but if we need to store stuff, uh, maybe we should have a, a building, a mattress, whatever, or extend on to what we have. And then talking about the other buildings out there, uh, on the, I don't know what maintenance building, I guess you'd call it, you know, one of the skylight that's busted out of it, that's, uh, and it's been raining, pouring inside of there. Um, and if you look at the roofs, they're all discolored and, you know, need, it needs maintenance out there. Um, so, that, that was my view on the park, but I think around that old barn, I don't know if that's historic or, or what that is there. Uh, it's kinda out of place where it's at now, you know, and that probably was part of the High Tower property, I'm pretty sure.
It was.
Yeah, but, you know, the weeds and the stuff that grows up and the barrels stacked up, it, it's just not a good look for our park, if, if we wanna have a nice park look. Uh, the other thing I'm bringing up is motel taxes. Uh, currently, we have five percent. So I looked at some other cities, and that five percent is for one hotel. And I think we might get a little bit from Airbnb, the, the B and Bs here, a little bit. Uh, and that generates about seventy thousand dollars a year from, uh, the one hotel we have. Now that we're gonna have two hotels, and I don't wanna make this degrading saying a lesser, lower-priced hotel that's going out there, is probably the best way to say it. Probably there's gonna be, if what you see in different places around airport, there is different activities that, uh, go on in those lower-priced hotels. Uh, we're gonna have to have increased presence, I'm sure, in the future as these things progress. Um, you know, I even see in the future, we're probably gonna have to have a substation for police and fire or whatever, that's way down the road. Uh, to give you an idea, Fallon's at nine percent, Fairview Heights is at seven, we're at five. Um, and these type of fees do not affect the people in town, that's the travelers going on. Give you an idea, I just was in Burnham Beach and it was thirteen percent, you know, and most people don't look at that when you're renting a hotel, but at the end, you look at it and say, how come this hundred dollar a night hotel for seven nights is a thousand dollars, you know, when you look at all the fees? Uh, and, um, you know, plus they have like a two dollar fee on top of that too in some of these places. So I think we really need to look at that, plus I think we've talked about other fees that I think we're, uh, way behind on. Uh, the other one is kind of a, a thing that gets passed around and I get complained at, about it, and I think other councilmen do too. Um, and the first thing I wanna ask is, does the city impose a tax on gasoline in town? Do we have a separate tax on gas? I get asked that question. And I don't think we do. Okay, because people, I, I knew, you'd know. You know, so the thing is, is like, what's good is gas is higher than anybody else's around. Go to Breeze, it's less, you go here. Uh, I think even, Lynda Inger said that, you know, Dean's been in business, you know, for a long time, and he can't tell us why it's different. I know there's difference in summer grades and winter grades and, you know, things, but logically, if you think, uh, most of these places are getting gas from the same place, you know, from Pisau or wherever, you know, Wood River, basically, they drive farther that way, yet our gas is higher here. And I know for a fact that some gas station, people will call the other gas stations to see what their prices are and adjust them accordingly. Well, that's a violation of the Sherman Antitrust Act, you know? Um, and I, I think, I don't know if the city's responsibility, it would be for the betterment of the citizens, uh, but certainly the newspaper sitting back there should be investigating something like that, to come up with an answer for the citizens. You know, for how many years have you got that, that question? I got reamed on that last week by two different people, and they don't believe that it's, they think the city's just, you know, raping them, basically. Uh, so I don't know how we would look into that. You know, maybe we'd get some help from some other people, possibly. Newspaper should investigate it. Newspaper should investigate it. Yeah. Uh, but I, I think it's time to put that to rest, uh, to get an answer on that. So I don't know, is the city doing that in the best interest of its citizens? Or you, the newspaper? Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Bakerly?
I just had one quick question. Um, I saw the proposed city, city center location was on the south side of the park, is that a mistake?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I figured there probably wasn't, there wasn't much room there, but that's all I had.
Councilman Bynne for?
I will say this, as far as that north side of the park, and city manager and myself, we've had a lot of discussions on this, we really need to sit down and figure a plan back there, because everything here is hitting us all at once. And if we make the wrong decision, we're blocking everything else, okay? And, no offense, the dog park's beautiful. Is that really a good place for it? It's kinda in the middle of everything, looking back, would've been better off to the side more somewhere, or, you know, so we got more room instead of just a...
It's kinda in the middle of everything, looking back, would've been better off to the side more somewhere, or, you know, so we got more room instead of just around that. And maybe that's not a bad thing to go around it, but if we don't pay attention, that side's gonna fill up really fast over there, and then we're out of room, so. There's, all these projects, they're all proposals right now. There's nothing, you know, that we're gonna do them or, till we can really figure out what we really want over there and where it's gotta be, so. And I know Sal and Cody's been working on that, so, to give you an idea, so.
Okay, that's all I got. City Manager, you got anything?
Uh, just a couple to run through here, and a couple that came in late today. Um, one issue, um, and I know Melissa's looking into it, except our orders, but we're getting some calls from Co Light Drive. It's just west of the park with increased activity there, tournaments, we have a lot of tournaments now that we didn't usually have a few years ago. Uh, about parking situation, I don't know if you've ever driven that, but the fact that your Co Light is kinda tight, people are parking, even if you parked on one side of the street, it makes it difficult. One thing I thought, uh, we'll, we'll double check our code, but again, if, if it's a double-edged sword, if we put some type of no parking restriction, that doesn't just apply to visitors, it's gonna apply to people that live there. We ran into that over by the high school, put them up, took them down, put them up. One thing I was thinking is potentially, at least on that first entrance apron where there are no houses, of putting either no parking if we don't have them in the code. We'll get a proposal to put those up, that first entrance in the Co Light, there's no houses facing that part of the street. That might help deter people from going in there, putting up maybe not a through street. But I think putting up any no parking signs within that circle, it would have just as much of a negative impact to the residents as it would. Temporary people out of there, but at least that first apron and where there are no houses, that both, those two houses face 10th Street, it might help. Want to maybe kinda think about that, you can get back to me what your thoughts are.
Resident parking only?
Enclosurement, those.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, there we go.
So, that, that's an issue, um, let's skip that next one, go onto a couple of others real quick. Uh, I was contacted by Whisper, uh, today, um, one thing they would like to, I didn't see a problem with it, but I wanted to run it by the council. Um, they would like to put up, um, Wi-Fi hotspot at the new mill stage for public use, and they would like to put one in Chevy Park at least during homecoming, um, for free Wi-Fi access, Wi-Fi hotspot. I didn't think we'd have any issue with that. I think their only request was that they could put up, you know, service being provided by Whisper Internet. Now, that's a kind of a judgment call, since they are providing the service, but we typically don't allow advertising in our parks. So, I wanted to run that by you.
Advertising in the park, on the ball fields.
If somebody would put those little yard signs in, we could pull them out.
Yeah.
I think for homecoming, it's probably not a big deal, but then, at the mall, you know.
Are they gonna leave it, leave it up all the time, or are they only wanting to leave, want it there for certain times throughout the year?
I believe the one, they said for now, at least during the summer concert series, that's, that's not year-round yet. It's just more for while events are going.
Okay, who do we have the internet service with down at the park? Who's furnishing that internet service?
So, we have, um.
I thought Whisper was doing that for us.
No, I don't believe it's not. It's through our, our internet provider here, so CPS is our IP provider. We've set up some stuff down there, so it's through the city's internet, um, provider. Um, to think about, and you don't have to, just give me a message back. But right now, it'd just be temporary or a special event.
What about down at the, uh, reservoir also? I mean, it's, the reason I brought that up, I mean, it's in your, um, update for the, okay, you went and brought up about bathrooms down there, okay? Um, if we put that down there and we have more use of everything down there, um, if we can talk to Whisper about putting in both places, um, I don't know.
Would you talk to them about a more permanent solution, but right now, their interest is just in, I guess, when there's more crowds there for special events.
Because if, if there's no charge or anything that's for it, I don't see why we, you know, what, what it would hurt to go and put in there that, you know, being, with the internet being provided by Whisper.
It, it, it doesn't, uh, by, you know, there is no cost to us or, um, they're.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, I don't.
Just be allowing an advertisement sign for the property, that would be, I think, that drives our path upon.
Just like Councilman Baker went and said, I mean, we got it down at the park, I mean, if we're, we're gonna go and not allow it at one place, why are we allowing it at the other place? I have no problem with it.
Another one, uh, the property we purchased at four forty-nine South Broadway, um, that's not the address of the property, it's actually back off Union, uh, the one and a quarter acres. It did have an old shed on the, on the back corner, but we would probably end up tearing it down. Um, I, I talked to the department, it's of no use to any of us for, for anything. I was contacted by the resident, by, uh, four forty-nine South Broadway, they have interest in it and would like to, they would move it from our property onto their property that they bought, um, you know, the council would have any concern, but the cost to tear it down and for us to get rid of it, there really is no value in it. Um, we'd have to draw up some type of exchange of, you know, get it legally, um, you know, a better more dollar amount exchange unless we guys have a problem with it. But it's more getting rid of a problem for us than something they would like to have, so I think, I guess, they had objections to me drawing that up.
Do we have any, uh, problem as far as, uh, liability, if, say, whenever they're moving it, if someone got hurt or whatever?
We'd have to include a release on that.
Okay, which you, you guys would take care of that for, okay? I have no problem.
Last one, just, uh, we, we talked about this in the last meeting also, and, and we need to keep moving forward if this is the direction we're going in, now that we have the full council, um, so I know how to direct staff. As far as the proposal that was submitted for, um, looking into new public safety buildings, fire EMS leagues, and a recreation center. Do you want me to proceed with, uh, the next steps that I, I proceed is we're going to have to probably, if you look for some money in the budget this year to get the architects working on finalizing some drawings, but until we have some finalized drawings, we're not gonna know complete cost. And then the next step, once we have that, is once we have a better idea of complete cost, is talking to bond council about drawing up a bond issue, but we need to have those numbers to do that. So, rather than waste time and money on something we're not following forward to, at least, see proceed forward. Kinda want to get, feel the council in its entirety of giving me some direction on that, but.
Has anyone looked into, um, a different location as far as to actually build a complete facility, uh, that would be, where they weren't, weren't in a residential area and they have to go through anything else? I mean, it's, has anyone looked into that, or?
Talking about public safety?
Well, I'm talking about public safety, I'm talking about fire department, talking about, uh, EMS, because, um, would it be better to have somewhere over on Route Four where you'd have easy access in and out, or would it be better to, you know?
We, we discussed this a little bit, um, it, it usually is good to have it in your, your centralized downtown area. Um, centrally located to, you know, most of the residential population, so that how, uh, fire insurance is, is determined, uh, property owners, distance from a fire truck or from a firehouse. Joe, is that the Joe Fire, uh, I'm sorry, not Joe, Rob, that, uh, Fire, Fire Department, you said, the meeting last night? Cause there's talk about, you know, will we ever have a need for a satellite office up north with Fire Department? Right now, no, um, I didn't believe that that was really anything that would be needed in the near future. And his one comment was is that, uh, most of your volunteers with the department are, are in the centralized downtown community community. They, you know, with the computer and then the spur of doubt versus driving somewhere else to get to the truck from where they're at. Other thought of that being is since we do have that entire block in the downtown area, it'd be more of a public safety campus on that entire block versus having buildings separated in different.
I, I just think that, that's, I, I agree with you there as far as having it there and et cetera. Okay, whenever we're talking about tearing down a civic center, or talking about getting a bond and everything else, um, it needs to be decided on what we're gonna do with the civic center. I mean, we gonna have a, uh, park district? Is that gonna fall under a park district if we move it down to the park? Um, how is that, because if it is right now, what went and came up was different, with different entities using that particular facility for, uh, daycares and this kinda stuff and everything else, and, um, you know, how's all that gonna fill in? And if, if we're going out and asking for a bond, and we're talking over thirty, thirty million dollars for a bond, okay, we need to be able to tell taxpayers and everything what we're gonna do and what that facility's gonna be used for.
Yep, absolutely, and, and that would be part of a marketing campaign from the bond issuing output. Um, and some conversations that I had, so, if, the plan is to move forward with all four facilities and that being a new rec center and the existing civic center being tore down, um, we would move operations into a location in Chevy Park with the new building, having gyms, meeting space, offices, and, you know, I talked with Wolling and staff, and it's been coming. Would we create a park district? No, the district is a non-subject tax entity. We would have to, as a city, actually give up control of our parks to a district. And will we create a city parks department? Absolutely. Um, that's coming.
A parks department, park district, I mean.
Parks department.
Right, right, one or the other.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're gonna go and try to sell this, as far as what's going in there and everything, if we, we need to actually have something that goes and says what that building's gonna be used for. In other words, we gonna go and spend that money and go and put a building and everything that's gonna be down there, and it's gonna be used by someone to go and come in and go put, uh, karate classes in there, someone else come in and put knitting classes, or, okay? In other words, what's that building gonna be used for? We're talking about spending over a couple of million dollars to go and tear one down and put another one in.
Correct. My vision would be that the city operated with those in the building. We would have, we would put the parks director, staff, we would operate it, we would be the ones running whatever rec link out of that building, be it basketball, volleyball, running.
Okay, that's basically what, is what I was talking about, as far as we would have the control on what goes in there and stuff.
Not to say that there wouldn't be rooms that could be leased or rented for.
Right.
Anybody to do what they want to do.
Right.
Um, some of the programs that are currently in the, that are just, certainly lease space to run that program or whatever programs they want, but operation would be operated by safety.
Okay, 'cause I say, the, the civic center, I mean, I think they have good programs down there, uh, the director's doing a tremendous job, okay? But to be able to build a facility and everything and around it, because the civic center is not in, I di- is not part of the identity of the city. In other words, we don't pay the people or anything else or any of that kind of stuff. So, if we're building a new facility, then we need to figure out what we're gonna do with that before we, okay?
I can proceed that being aids, the city provided service in the park, uh, for recreation.
That's fine. Great.
Other question on that, my one concern is, have we looked at what the financial projections move?
Yeah.
Cause we'll have to add staff and all that, like, but, but putting, building with the bond, bond issue, that, that's one thing, that's one time, but we'll be in for two, we'll be for next, huh, huh, years depending on that staff. Are we prepared to do that? Cause I know some of the rec centers around here, they don't make mon- they don't make anything at all. Are we prepared for that?
Certainly gonna be a cost and effort, we're gonna have to do. I think in, in the short future, with some moving around of current staff, um, I think at minimum, we would need to hire one new park laborer. Um, the current staff we have, we would probably move people around into a director position, or I'll call a recreational specialist. That would have to offset the director, because operational hours, as we know, the rec center is not seven to four-thirty, the way City Hall stays. It's gonna go on till ten o'clock tonight, so they would have to, have to have somebody in charge there during that.
Those weekends.
Those weekends, so, yes, there would be some, and the staff, I think, would be pretty minimal at the beginning, but that's something we're gonna have to talk about, especially in the coming time. But that's one personnel one.
I mean, this is, it's a hard decision with the civic center, it really is. But just when you start figuring, you make that place ADA compliant, which we're almost backed against the wall right now that we have to. Cause at any given time, they can show up there tomorrow, they don't have to shut it down immediately, but there's nothing we can do, unfortunately. You know, it's, uh, you know, it probably needs a million dollars or so, just to upgrade it, get it all ADA compliant. It's not, you know, counting the, you know, brickwork that needs to be done, the roof that needs to be done, you know, things like that. It's, it's not an easy subject, so it's something to really consider. But as far as the public works, facilities being over there, after talking with the police department and, and the fire department and the ambulance, it's pretty centrally located right there, and that's what they, what do you call it, the ISO rating, Dean?
I'm sorry?
That's like an ISO rating you get for having that centrally located, like?
Well, the location, the, your distance from fire trucks is a factor in ISO, and Rob was just saying that that ISO's coming in.
Right.
And they hope to go down some more.
Right.
And that was, I did think around for very tough years.
Right.
Start build satellite stations, that's a neat idea, but then again, you don't have people out there to cover them. If you look at Wood River, East Hall, some other cities, they've condensed back because.
Right.
Logistics, you know, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the park. Yeah, it's, your, your distance from a fire truck is in fact, is one of that.
Okay.
You breed all kinds of things in that.
Yeah, so there's a lot going into this, so, I guess we really just gotta decide if we wanna start looking forward and.
So, my, my ask would be, the next step would be for me to get a proposal from the architects and put up a cost for them to make the next step of drawings up, so that we would have an idea of what, uh, costs.
I'd make a motion to.
I mean, this, the next step would be exactly what we need, not, they gave us a big program the other night, you know, things like this. So, this would be exactly what, you know, Fire Department, the Police Department, the ambulance knows they need for up there.
Do we need a motion to, uh, to have, you look at that?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Just, you're just gonna.
I'm gonna give a number back to you, this is what they say.
Then we'll, then we'll approve it or disapprove, okay.
Then tell all right.
Okay.
People need to, give a number for them of what it would cost to have them draw up the architect for rendering and material list and all of that.
Okay. Let's just move with that. Okay, we getting exit of the session? No litigation?
Oh, no litigation?
I'm, I'm aware.
So.
Oh, you have to, are you?
Okay.
Okay, hey, that's, that's good.
Any miscellaneous or final actions? Nothing. Take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Client moves second by Begley to adjourn at eight twenty-eight.
Roll call.
Client?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Begley?
Yes.
Fine for?
Yes.
Status?
Yes.